To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so Dave and John are missing this evening, so it's us up here.
The eighteen.
Yeah, there we go.
She's eighteen, we're eighteen.
I'm good with that. Okay, so the regular agenda, Brent, there was anything other?
No additions.
You guys didn't see anything on there, otherwise I'll accept a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So, oop, second.
Okay, Chelsea got there first, and Brian got it second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Okay, looking through there. Jimmy, you got any other thing you want to add on there?
No, we just reduced some of the retained agenda contract they requested that. They're far along where I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Vance, you got any?
Uh, I'm good.
Okay.
The KPH payments are those, which ones are those?
It's for the connection to Fargo and then the Lost River.
Yeah, so, um, I guess where are we at? Is that one of the last payments, or is that just?
This is, this is one of the last ones for the connection to Fargo. This is probably the third. There's probably two more, there's a semifinal and there's a final.
Okay.
And then the Lost River one, that one, we were withholding, retaining quite a bit on that one just because of the magnitude of the project, and they whittled a bunch of stuff and not very much. There's just a contractor request that we reduce it just because of the new bidding year and stuff, so. We took it down to cover what the remaining work was, plus, I kept the percentage plus that, so.
So, great, I, Vance, I'm probably gonna put you on the spot a little bit. Where are we at with those? Are we running about on budget? Are we under budget? Are we over budget?
I think we're right on, actually.
Yeah, right on to a little bit under, okay, I think, okay. Okay, that's great.
So, it's moving in the right direction.
Yeah, it's, I mean, for as big a projects as they are, to be able to get that close, and that was, that was my question, is are we expecting any additional big charges?
I don't, I don't think so. There might be some incidents.
No more hurricanes that can affect our pipe costs or anything like that that's gonna blow us out of the water?
No, certainly not.
I mean, just completely unexpected expenses, and that's what I want to avoid.
We're not, we're not anything at this point, Brian.
Okay, as far as we know, there's nothing. Alright, that's good.
Okay, here we go. Any other questions of those who want to accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
Motion approved.
Okay, Brian, that's a motion. Can I get a second? Chelsea has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. See council minutes. Let you guys look through that, 'cause I was not here when that.
I didn't get a chance to walk through this. And it looks, maybe anything that looks right?
No.
Right, motion approved.
Okay, so Brian makes a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, move along here, on the public comment. Anybody got anything they wanna?
I have some.
Okay, proceed. Introduce yourself to everybody too.
My name's David Rodley. I was here a month ago, I believe.
Yep.
I just got two, three questions, and I see on your agenda you're gonna have a special assessment policy discussion later on, so I won't talk about that.
Okay.
But, uh, my questions I have tonight are, one, were the assessments on this property that we all had assessed, was that based on a thousand dollars an acre or fifteen hundred dollars an acre? I've been told it's a thousand dollar an acre start. Do you know that? Brendan?
I would have to check with Lucas or Jim.
There wasn't a base on it, Dave, as far as the minimum, what it was. I, I have to look back to see what it was, the base was, and I have, I have to do that for you.
If the base was a thousand, then if people were assessed eighty percent, they have five acres, they should be assessed four thousand dollars. That's my question on that.
Yep.
And I can get that information from you. Now, we're having a roundabout out here. I haven't heard anything about it. I haven't seen on Facebook too much. How is that gonna be handled in the assessment policy and procedure? Notification, and what are you gonna do?
Well, right now, we're still in the engineering plans and specifications, so we're still drawing up the, what it is, and then part of that will get the cost estimate for that. So, we haven't entered the period where we've decided how we're going to fund that. We just know at this point that Cass County has pledged a million dollars towards paying for that, uh, and then the city is going to have some portion of that. Uh, and, and so we haven't made the decision whether that is going to go off for special assessments, or if the city, how much the city will actually cover.
And does the school help pay for some of that too?
If, if it ends up going to special assessment.
If it does. And how much is the cost of the roundabout?
Jimmy, you had a comment there.
The special assessment district for the roundabout of seventy-sixth Avenue improvements is the city limits. That's the way the city council decided to set up. It will probably, the assessed properties will probably not be the entire city limits, but that's something the assessment commission and city commission will work out. But that is what the district boundaries are right now.
So, in other words, the people that are using this that are not in the city of Horace will not be assessed the rest of our income?
We, we cannot assess those outside of Horace.
Okay, so.
However, however, just to finish here, is, uh, the school is, has told us that they are willing to, the school district is willing to take on a over-assessment. So, take on the. Pardon?
By tax, but that's fine.
Well, they, that is how they can get.
I understand.
Folks from outside of Horace to help contribute paying for this. Also, we're looking at ways where the city can help cover some costs tied to the project too. So, we're looking at different avenues where the school district can step up contribution, more than the average property owner, and also where the city can take on an excessive amount of costs tied to a city lot to help ease the cost of any special assessments too.
How big is that project gonna be, how costly?
Uh, let me find my number here. I have it on the S- that, we talked about this later on. I don't know if you've.
If you, if you adjust the roundabout itself, or the roundabout plus the seventy-six reconstruction, I mean, those are two different numbers, right?
Roundabout itself to start with.
So, I think, well, two point eight.
How much?
Two point eight is the roundabout. And the round, that extends from the Splitter Islands to the Splitter Islands.
They said one point eight.
Yeah, well, well, but that includes the seventy-sixth Avenue.
Two point eight for the roundabout, and how much for the seventy-sixth Avenue?
Seventy-sixth Avenue is? Of that, the roundabout was?
A little over three, around three for seventy-sixth Avenue.
Yeah, for the whole project, including seven.
Does the whole thing is six million dollar project? Two point eight and three, that's the way I'm, I'm trying to understand. So, now you're right when you assess that, you know, that's the big question. And I have a big concern. I mean, I live right over here. That and the acre people are just here. They're out there, they're gonna get assessed. Everybody in this town uses that more or less. So, you're gonna just assess.
Hence why that district grew, and that's why, that's why that district grew.
So, when do you have special assessment meetings?
That doesn't take place till after the project is, uh, constructed.
So, in other words, there's no input in regards afterwards, and then it's gonna be, if you say there's five million dollars of assessment's gonna happen, the project's been confirmed, now you go to your assessment committee, you turn around, they will decide how it's going to be.
So, there was already, there was already a protest period for this project that gets published in the newspaper, uh, and it's a thirty-day protest period, where residents that are in the, the district that has been created already can come in and protest the project and say that they do not want the same.
And that's been already by the wayside again because of the advertisement in the paper.
Which is required under law.
Nobody in the city was notified by law two times. I understand that, but you're still not letting the people in the city know. You know, I mean, you're just advertising, it's getting to be a paperless, you know, place now. People won't read the newspaper that much. If they do, they write, read it on the internet. So, I'm back like a month ago. It's time for the council people, you people, start letting us know the city of Horace, the residents, what's going on. If you just wanna put two ads on the paper, you know, and just kind of blow us off, that's up to you. That's totally up to you. But, you know, I think you need to take a stand on how it's gonna be taken clear.
And that's why you'll see on the agenda, the city council is going to be discussing that, and, because there are these concerns. It's not just from you, it's from other residents in the city.
I could bring a hundred people to this up here if I wanted.
You could go to any city.
And we live in the city too, and feel like we want that, we would want that same respect.
Well, I hope so. Unless you just wanna push it through, I hope that the city grows, you know? It's great that the city's growing, but you gotta think about the people that are here. My other question I have is, how long are you gonna run the lagoon?
To be determined.
We don't know.
Okay, 'cause I know you said it's gonna be available from eight to ten years from now. So, in other words, when you put this line in, you're going to make sure that you can scale down the lagoon and make sure this line is okay. So, I got assessed on stuff that I don't use, and the lagoon could probably handle everything except the new development, and you don't know when you're gonna be shutting the lagoon down, but they assessed everybody in time. That's the way I see it.
We could shut it down tomorrow, but right now, we don't do that because we haven't tested the line.
Okay, and let's say in April you test it. Are you gonna shut it down?
No.
No, okay, very good, thank you.
Alright, so, Lindsey, you're up. Alright.
Um, we've had pretty quiet months. Numbers are up, but, uh, eighty-six calls, three crashes, not too bad with all the weather we've had. Zero reckless, no female complaints, one animal call which was down, zero alcohol related, five medical, three cetacean, six warnings, no parking, and one drug-related, um. Sixteen of them were traffic complaints, as well as four for us attempting warrants. There was one drug-related incident that was the search warrant town. They just found, that's on the mental. Drug-related stuff, and then there were two stolen vehicles this month. County did have a large-scale burglary just outside of West Fargo. Um, the vehicle was taken out of an unlocked garage, and the keys were in the vehicle. Remember to lock your stuff up. Coco, the cop was great. Thanks again for lending money to the bikes. We have four bikes and four helmets and four other little happy kids, so. Probably had a hundred or thirty-five people, so it was a good turnout.
Good.
But yeah, other than that, this weather needs to stop and.
So, you didn't?
So, no issues with people, obviously with all the snow, there haven't been any, um, you know, people aren't parking outside for the most part, so.
No.
If they're, this is my question, with snow removal, there haven't been any issues with cars being parked where they shouldn't be to, that would hinder snow removal?
There was one, and I gave them a couple, you know, a couple warnings within a week, and it's done, so.
No problem, alright, good.
Yeah, that ample time to get it moved. So, I haven't had any, I haven't had any other parking with, you know, snow removals and that, so. It was a pretty decent month, kind of, it's been very cold.
What's the law for people driving stolen vehicles in the ditches?
You can drive them in the ditches.
Could you? I've had people drive in a ditch in front of my house who are straying on my property, running over my little tree.
What's that?
They're straying, they're straying off the, the road right away, onto my property, running over my little trees. I assume that's gotta be, kind of, illegal, isn't it?
Yeah, then I would call us and we can handle that.
I'd throw the trespassing sign.
Yeah.
I had the same issue at my place.
People put up some signs and called us right away, and, you know, color, at least, I mean, it's pretty tough to get a, anything else, so, colorless home wheel and whatever, or anybody.
Sure.
Use your seconds, if not minutes, away, so.
Sure, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
You?
Lindsey, also, thank you for your, uh, the blankets that you guys did, the donations and stuff like that. That was a pretty cool thing. We read about that, so appreciate you doing that. Alright, so, on to garbage, water, and sewer fee resolution. Brent, you're up.
Okay, this is a fun one. I know everybody loves you here. Brian's been anxious for this conversation.
Oh yeah, I can't wait.
Um, there are a couple changes that need to occur on our current resolution for water and, water, sewer, and trash. Uh, first off, the easier one is for water and sewer, the current resolution states residential, commercial minimum charge. Council, when, my understanding, when council approved that resolution, they intended that to be a base charge, not a minimum charge. Incorporating that as a base charge is then folks, customers would get charged X number of dollars, and then they would be charged for their usage separate from that. Right now, how it's structured is that being labeled minimum charge is they're not being charged for the usage until they reach a certain point.
Now, you're talking about water.
For water and, water and sewer.
Right, correct.
So, that is one change in the resolution, uh.
Just a clarification, it's not really a change to the.
It's clarification, clarification.
The meaning of the base.
Yes.
You know, base rate, so to speak.
Yes, it's a clarification to the resolution. Uh, the second item, which, this is, this has been on the council's radar for a little while. When we, when council approved the new five-year extension with waste management towards the end of last year, uh, it was brought to your attention that there was, uh. The rate that they're charging is not the same as what we are charging our residents. There would need to be an increase. Also, it would come for activities tied to the compost area, being able to have that amenity for the residents. Uh, the trash fund would be the fund that would help sustain and make that happen. So, um, currently, for trash, we charge residents.
Nineteen fifty.
Nineteen fifty-two. That is for trash and recycle. Um, we have approximately nine hundred customers for trash and recycling, and for a given year at nine hundred customers in nineteen fifty-two, that would give you a revenue of just over two hundred ten thousand dollars. However, we are at a shortfall of sixty-two cents per customer per month. That comes off to seven forty-four per customer per year, and if we had this shortfall happen for the entire year, uh, we'd be at almost sixty-seven hundred dollars of a shortfall in revenue. Our, our trash fund would be in the negative by about seven, sixty-seven hundred.
Can you clarify the, the components that contribute to that shortfall? Because there's two parts to that, right?
Well, the, it's flat out, we're paying waste management twenty dollars and fourteen cents for.
But that was, that, the one part of that is because they should have increased the rates when they didn't.
They should have. We should have been right across this issue last year, last spring.
Right, but they didn't, so, we, we got the benefit of not having these rates for six, eight months, right?
Actually, over a year.
It was over a year?
The, Waste Management calculated that, uh, they were at loss revenues of about eighty-seven hundred dollars before they caught this, and they didn't wanna come back and retro, or try to retro back that on the city and the residents, uh, so they ate that cost. However, that was a, that issue was addressed within the five-year contract extension, and now we need to address that with the utility rates. We've been running.
But, so, so, that, that's, that's one, that's one element of part of the rationale for the increase. And the other part is the funding for the spring cleanup, or is it something else?
Well, in order to be able to have the dumpsters, for example, for compost.
The dumpsters for spring clean, okay, that's why I wanted to clarify what this is for. Is it for the compost, is it for the spring cleanup?
Spring cleanup, my understanding is that's within the rate for the residents? Or no, we pay that, no, we pay that separate, we pay that separate.
We've been paying that.
About sixteen, about sixteen grand.
Yep, so, between spring cleanup and the dumpsters, we need to be generating at least twenty to thirty thousand dollars more in revenue to be able to cover our costs for spring cleanup and dumpsters for compost. Uh, to do that, we would need to be right around a rate of twenty-three dollars a month.
To cover the cost for the garbage and the compost and the spring cleanup?
Here, I'll tell you in just a second.
Or is it just the compost?
Well, to do spring cleanup and compost.
Okay, so it's all three, basically covering the cost for all three?
If, if we charge twenty-three dollars, uh, that would give us a revenue of just over thirty-five thousand. That should be enough to generate compost, spring cleanup, trash recycle. And if there is any surplus, there wouldn't be a whole lot, but that would be for compost site improvements. And any additional revenues would go into a separate fund for trash, just trash itself. So, compost and trash would operate just out of that fund. What we're trying to do is make all the utilities self-sufficient out of each of their own funds.
I'm with you, I'm with you. So, the issue is that, that, that's a pretty big jump.
Yep.
Right, so it's a four-dollar jump. That's a, that's a, you know, two hu, well, not two hundred percent, but it's, it's a, that's a pretty big jump. So, I, I don't know that we could solve that all in one shot, so.
You could do, you could do twenty-two, it'd be running close, but then we'd be looking at an increase.
Well, even, even if we said, okay, we're gonna cover the cost of the compost and the regular garbage, because we know the increase has to go up sixty-three cents at a minimum, to just rec, cover any of the costs. So, we're at twenty, twenty dollars and fifty cents somewhere in, right there, right? So, uh, we're about, at that point anyway, so then adding another dollar fifty covers most of the cost of the compost, maybe not all of it, correct?
You'd cover, it would cover the dumpsters. So, if we brought it up to twenty-one, it would probably cover our, our spring cleanup dumpster, dumpsters for spring cleanup. So, if we go twenty-two.
Not curbside pickup.
Well, that'd be the curbside pickup and, and dumpsters.
Well, yeah, because we really don't have dumpster per se, because that's, I mean, your, your basically gives us about sixteen thousand dollars.
Yes, so it'd give us the ability to cover spring cleanup.
Either we use that to cover the spring cleanup, or use the funds to cover the, the compost.
Yep.
One of the two.
And if you go at twenty-two, that would give us, um, up to roughly twenty-six thousand. Um, that would give us enough to where we could get by, but as the rate increases annually with waste management, then this rate would need to increase.
Well, but we aren't expecting a rate increase from waste management this year.
Not on the next calendar year.
Till twenty-twenty.
Till twenty-twenty, yep.
So, I would, I would much rather eat this cost increase now, you know, a smaller increase now, and then potentially have to do another one in twenty-twenty for garbage rates.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think we can, that's too big a jump, because, I mean, we, we, this is just garbage rates.
This is garbage and recycle.
Right, so now we've got, we've got the same issue on the water side, correct?
I, I would suggest we tackled the trash one before getting into the water.
Oh, I, I agree, I agree, so, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, it's like, let's, let's bite this off in a smaller bit right now, because we know it's twenty and a half, and what if we went to twen, twenty-one and a half, we'd compromise.
If you go twenty-one and a half.
Because that's basically adding a dollar.
Revenue would be approximately just over twenty thousand.
So, that would at least cover the cost of the dumpster, the.
Cover the dumpsters, and then the compost, or the, it would cover spring cleanup and then give some money for dumpsters, which we could curve some of our costs with the compost by having our own compost pile. We can't, we don't have to send everything to.
To the landfill.
The landfill, yes. And that was the intention of us running our compo, or building a compost site. It's going to take time to build that up. So, you can't dump everything all there at one time, you have to stagger it, but the whole intention was to, uh, bring it up over time.
So, what do you think? If we go to, is that a compromise, or what do you, what do you guys think?
Profit's fee, I mean, it's a pretty big kick.
I know.
No worry about.
So, Dave, you had a question back there?
Yeah, but there's new development going on, so we get a new garbage person over there, a new household, so you gotta be charging for garbage. Does your waste management contract increase every time you add a new garbage person?
They pay the same rate.
Same, they pay the same, you pay the same rate to them?
We pay per customer, so every time we have a new customer, we pay that amount.
Passing that, passing on all costs, it's all it is, just passing on the cost. And actually, we've been at a, running at a deficit for many years, so we're trying to get caught up, is the problem. So, I, you guys, twenty-one and a half is a compromise? I mean, let's, let's just, let's just plug in the numbers for now, and then let's run some, run some models and, and maybe do a little more analysis, because I don't, I don't think we're ready to approve the resolution tonight, right?
Well, we will need, the sooner we can address the, the clarification on the resolution, you're right up to approve a new resolution for water and sewer.
That's what I mean, so we've got a.
If you're gonna go through approving the new resolution, it's easier to do it all in one shot.
Well, I know that, but the actual resolution document itself would include these rates, and we, that would probably happen next meeting.
Well, you could do it at this one, okay.
Alright.
You could prove council, or you could approve a new resolution.
So, I suppose we can, we can approve the changes that need to be made, and then determine the effective date.
Yep.
Right? Lucas, we would probably just say, okay, if we're gonna approve these rates, if I, today, they would go affect April first, or whatever other date we think going to affect. We know we have to apply these dates fairly soon because we're losing money right now.
Yes.
So.
The sooner you're gonna approve it, the sooner you stop.
So, that's what I'm saying, you wanna go with that compromise then? And then we just, we'll have to keep an eye on it.
I, I think we gotta keep an eye on it. At, at, at a minimum, we have to go up to sixty cents or whatever we're short. At a minimum, we gotta do that. If you at least put in a dollar, you know, on top of that, then that at least gives us some cover of the cost of, of one or the other, the compost or the, or the, or the spring cleanup, one or the other. Doesn't make any difference which one, but we, at least we're getting something.
At twenty-one, you would generate about sixteen thousand, which would be the recovery cost.
Spring cleanup, so that would be.
You're gonna be running three posts. Twenty-one fifty, I think, would be your, if you're, wanna be able to help fund the compost site even remotely, I think that that would be your.
So, let's, let's do that. Let's start at the twenty-one fifty, unless you guys.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just, but I, yeah, we gotta keep an eye on it.
Yep, oh, I agree.
We're cutting it a little close here, but. Okay, so, don't you make the.
So, are you having a motion to approve the resolution amending your utility?
Well, we're not yet.
Yeah.
That's what I'm wanting, so I would hold off on.
So, so this, that's what this, this, the garbage rates would be at that change?
Yes.
To that rate.
Okay, twenty-one fifty. Okay, I might have known that one here. The next one. For, as we mentioned, within the water and sewer rates, they both buy what, with the tweaking to the resolution, or clarification to the resolution of removing minimum and clearly stating base. We've had pressure from the state to clean up our water and sewer rates. Uh, to the point that has cost us, or Eric, could cost us being able to get future funding. So, we have to be proving that we are implementing a rate that is going to generate the funds to, one, make sure we're in the black, and two, be able to pay off any loans, and three, be able to handle capital improvements. There are a lot of water and sewer capital improvements that the city is going to be facing in the upcoming years. We all know that, that's been a touchy subject. Uh, and this will kinda go into hand on the special assessment topic also. But, by addressing these utility rates, if we have these utility rates structured properly, we'll be able to handle those capital improvements within the utilities. As I mentioned before, we're trying really hard to separate out each of these utilities and have them function on their own. So, water utility should be able to pay for water improvements, and if they have to bond, if they have to bond against those utilities, we bond against the utility fund, not against the general fund. We bond against the sewer utility, not against the general.
Right.
So, our bonding rates are different. So, our bonding rates are different, or our bonding, uh, commitments that we have to show are different when it's tied to general fund versus those utilities. Um, I believe it was if you tie it to the utilities, it's a hundred twenty percent, is that, do you remember correctly, Lucas, a hundred twenty percent? Do you know? Okay.
You mean the the bonding.
How much we have to show we have available to pay off a loan versus how much?
You have to show that you have that amount of money to be able to take.
I believe, I believe for sewer and water is a hundred twenty percent, or depending on the loan programs. But if you bond against like a general fund, it's a two hundred percent, or it's a significant more.
Issue at hand is that we're not even close to that, so.
So.
It's a different topic.
So, in looking at these rates. By having a, making the assumption that all users are four thousand gallons, and I have, I can work up different scenarios here. With the twelve dollar base rate, that would give us, and everybody's a four thousand gallon user, that would give us approximately a hundred forty-four thousand dollars in revenue, were to say. If we have. Let's see here.
Well, you're, okay, so you're saying that, well, that you're saying the water usage rate would stay the same.
If the water usage rate stayed the same, and we kept the base the same, that's how much we would, would be at.
Okay.
So if we go.
Because the, the calculation that we used before were all based on six thousand gallons of usage, which is an average over the year. And that's what other, the the state rural waters and so forth use as a average usage, but in any case.
And I could do six thousand.
And that's, that's part of the reason why the revenue was designed to say, okay, if, rather than have a large increase in the base, the rate, the more homeowners use, the more they end up paying. So it was, it was generating the revenue from the actual usage rather than, you know, having a, a base rate that everyone pays. So, there are gonna be some residents that are heavy water users, we know that, but there again, they should be paying for that water usage. So that's why, the last time when we increased the water rate, we put more emphasis on the rate component versus the base. So. I guess, what are you recommending for a rate?
Well, if you were to adjust any area, I'd recommend that you guys look at adjusting the base. The reason why the base is the base gives you stability in the water fund, and same thing with the sewer. The cost per thousand gallons is a variable. So, you're gonna have significant swings in drought years or wet years based on people wiring their yards or anything like that, versus if you do it based on, we address the base rate. Then, that gives you more stability, at least some stability to where, when we're showing bond payments or payments to the state. That's going to sit better with them. As for. As for how much, uh, that's really up to the council where you guys would wanna go, twelve dollars is a step forward. Um, I think that going up to twenty, and I know that sounds like a lot.
It is a lot.
It is, but it is not anywhere out of line compared to our peers. So if we're expected to improve water quality and do all these changes for the re- for the city, we're not going to make the headway with twelve dollars. We are not.
We're between a rock and a hard place, because if I raise the rates, all of a sudden, the residents going, well, why should I be paying more money now for the same quality of water that I've been getting?
And.
And I get it, but we can't pay for those improvements until we actually generate enough revenue.
Yes.
So, we're between a rock and a hard place here, and how, how do we?
How, and how we would, if we did this, it would be a, my suggestion would be that if, if the council was to increase the rate for water and sewer, we'd have a specific plan of how we're improving this. So, for water, we would say, this is what we're doing. Council's already authorized, this is a engineer to work up numbers tied to our tower and start that process. We know we need a new water tower no matter what angle we do, if we go water treatment, or we connect to Fargo or Caserole. We know we have to have that, so we're starting that process already. So that's the very first step we would communicate to our residents, is that we need to do this improvement here. The next step is, we're gonna find out, are we gonna connect to Fargo, are we gonna connect Caserole? Are we gonna do our own water treatment, are we gonna still have that connection to supplement the city's supply? We figure that part out too, but we show that we have an actual plan. And that this is what we're going to do and have general timelines. It isn't going to be set in stone, but we're gonna have a general timeline saying, okay, in twenty nineteen, we're dealing with water tower. Twenty twenty, dealing with water tower and building. Twenty twenty, maybe, or twenty twenty-one, who knows, that might be time we're running a line to Fargo, or building our own treatment plant, or whatever, but we have to give that specific timeline. Uh, the feedback we've heard overall, at staff level, at least what I'm hearing, and in talking with some of the council members, one on, is, uh, having that assurance of if we are going to have that rate increase, that they see, folks see the actual plan, that's gonna help. But to give you a comparison from, our, right now, our structure is intended, intended, intended approach is to have a twelve dollar base. And three dollars per thousand. Caserole water is at twenty-seven dollars, roughly just over twenty-seven dollars for a base. And four fifty-five dollars per thousand gallons. That is a night and day difference between what we have and what they have. Now, they have hard water still, but they don't have the sediment built up like we do. So that's the comparison though.
They, they've actually, at least filtered enough to remove some of the filters.
Your sediment's not in there.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's something to keep in mind, you know, they're charging that already, and if you brought the base up some, that still would be significantly lower than what Caserole is at. Now, we have to take some, what we would do actually for this year, if you increase the base, then we'd probably, our very first phase actually is working water tower and valves. Getting more valves in town, so we don't have that whole situation where water has to be shut off the city, so a water line that could be repaired.
Right.
That's gonna be obstacle one. So.
But that's what I'm thinking too, if we, if we raise these rates, and we know we're gonna have to do it, and nobody likes that, and we understand that. But that's also gonna help the state realize that we are serious about some of these issues spread away for that we can, um, get some of these pro- we have cash for some of these projects. Because that's, that's an issue where we have to be aware of.
Some communities have went from no base to having a twenty-five dollar base. And that's painful, but they had to do it, they recognized they had to do it. Uh, I know Jamestown just went through that not too long ago, I was talking to their manager, and she was telling me that they had to do that increase to pay for these. So, um, yeah, and, and I bu- I bundle water and sewer because they near each other. So, if the council does wanna have a deeper discussion or think about this, that's, that's fine. We could address the couple of resolution areas and debate about this more.
That, that, that's why I was actually where I was headed, it's like, we know we need to make a change for the garbage rates, because that's, that's a problem. You know, we need to adjust that, and we're gonna do the clarification on the statement to say.
So we're gonna do those three, yes.
The three.
Water and sewer clarifications.
Yep, yep.
And trash.
Right, right. So it's the clarification, but the only real impact the residents will see is the increase for the garbage rate.
Yes.
Otherwise, it's just setting expectation that, you know, twelve dollars is a minimum charging, you will see the base rate, what they will see. And then they will be charged for actual usage for every thousand gallons beyond.
Now, we do have another cost meeting before the next utility bill goes out also. So that's something to keep in mind too, is we could have that to where this takes effect later on. Or if you wanna look at, or if you wanna consider a phased approach, we could do that too, where you say, at this time, this one's going to kick in, and at this time, we're going to be up to a higher amount.
One thing I would like to be able to see, now that we've got, actually got the, the meter readings in place, I would like to see, you know, if we, if the, if we kept the rates as they are right now, now we've got two months of data, what, how much revenue we're gonna get today, and we know that it's a, a low water usage time of year, right? So, even, even if, this would be considered the low point.
Right, so you can base it on that.
Right, so let's look at, saying, okay, how much are we actually billing out today? So we can say, all right, we know the usage is gonna go up from here, now let's see where, where it goes. So, I, let's, let's make that part of the next discussion, you know, once we get some more data. But I would, I would make a motion that we approve the changes to the resolution to clarify the wording on the base rate for the water and, and sewer. And adjust the garbage rates to twenty-one fifty. Per the recommendation.
Brian, what's that say, one more time your motion?
So, uh, so, we're making a motion to a, a, apply the clarification to the water and sewer rates. Uh, to say that, uh, the twelve dollars and five fifty are the base rate. And residents will be charged for actual water usage beyond, you know, for, for each thousand gallons. And then the change to the, the garbage rates to twenty-one fifty. To, uh, keep the, keep the wa- garbage, keep the garbage fund, garbage enterprise fund in the block.
Okay, Chelsea does the second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Here we go. So what we'll do is bring this back, in the next council meeting, we'll try and bring this back, have more information for you.
Continue the discussion of water rates.
Yes, and I, and we knew this would be deeper discussion.
Yeah.
How many water users is there?
Uh, water is approximately four hundred fifty, and sewer mirrors that, yeah.
There's two different numbers, because there's water users that are actually supplied, that get water from the city, which is about four fifty. And there's about eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred users that actually deliver garbage. We charge them because they get Caserole water.
But there's four hundred and fifty water slash sewer facilities. It's closer to five hundred now.
Yeah, about five hundred.
And the recommendation is you put it in, or it's happening, it's a little article about what you just decided.
Yep, we're, that's what we're gonna do. I mean, we, we published something last October, and we haven't made any changes since then, so.
But now you've made some changes in the process.
Yes.
Yep, so now, now comes the communication number.
What, what they, what they've done is approved the, for the water and sewer is basically just clarified what was already approved and what the message already went out over and over. Again, they did not change the rate for water and sewer.
See, like, I use forty-two hundred gallons a month, and the cost of me real water, about thirty-six dollars a month.
Just for your water?
Yeah.
And a horse customer would pay with this twelve dollar base, it would be twelve, what's another twelve, twenty-four? And how it was before is they're paying twelve dollars, so.
I just wanted to point out what I'm paying.
Yeah.
Which is great, I don't have to worry about it, and I don't have to get special set for a rural water, for a city water.
Okay, so.
Anything else on that, otherwise we'll move on to nine. We'll move on to nine.
Okay. Jim, I guess you and Lucas got this one.
Yeah, if you go to that, you can scroll down a little bit, Brian, and we can show you the, we're all, just put in the striping plans, kinda give you an idea of what the plan.
So, neat, right here?
Well, we can look at that, or you can look at the plans below it, but, uh, so this is kinda layout, this is a layout that was provided by Cascon, and then put from the city. That shows around about a hundred and seventeen, it shows the two, two lanes, uh, coming eastbound over one straight, and the two going northbound, one straight. Uh, there's a splitter island in there, typical with, uh, roundabouts. If you wanna scroll down a little bit, you can see that we.
So this, this is the one and a half.
Yep.
So if anybody's turning right, they can just follow this lane, and they'll, they'll just be able to go, keep going straight.
Correct.
But if they can stay in this lane, they can go around this way.
Yep.
Because this is, this is the roundabout lane right here.
Yep.
Uh, Jim, I've had three, four people ask me about the, uh, Cascon, the substation. Will that be moved?
It's up, we've been told that at some point in time it will be moved, but right now, the county is working on procuring some additional right-of-way for that corner piece there to get that through that, get through that, that area, so.
But as we speak, it's gonna stay there?
Yeah, there's been, we've been told by the, uh, authority that it is gonna be moved, but it's gonna wait since when.
Okay.
So, they are a little bit, well, when they're gonna do that, so. And as you can see, the road continues, continues to the, uh, east. The, uh, white area above where your cursor was is a frontage road, to access the residents on the north side. Just limit their access on to Seventy-Sixth Avenue. Um, limit the number of access points, and then the road continues on, uh, that would be the Sixty-Third slash, uh, where am I going too far?
So this is Sixty-Sixth right here.
Yeah.
And this is a school entrance, so this is extending the Seventy-Sixth to a single lane.
It drop, it drops down at the end to a, yeah, that turn lane drops off to where it will be going into the school. And then the last bit there from Sixty-Third up is it's, is an asphalt section, kind of a temporary one to get you back up to the gravel, to the area surface.
So at this point, it turns to gravel?
Yep, yep, it brings it back on, online with its, uh, with the, uh, current Seventy-Sixth Avenue, so. Uh, we, the.
Can you drop back down?
This way?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, now step to the, the picture right below that. Okay, what is the intersection on the left end, right there?
That one is.
Is that Sixty-Sixth Avenue?
Yeah.
Sixty.
Or Street, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, now the next one over?
Is the school entrance, that's for the bus loop.
Okay.
Where their bus drop off. And then the next one is Sixty-Third. That's right there.
So this is what the, Adeline folks were wondering about the Sixty-Sixth, right?
Okay, now. You've just given them three points of access to Seventy-Sixth.
They being what?
The school. And all we were talking about was.
The last one is Sixty-Third Street.
Yeah, this one, this one's a city.
Okay.
Yeah, because this, this extends on the very eastern edge of the whole.
They only have, they only get these two, Russ.
What's that?
They only get these two, this one is Sixty-Third Street, and this is constructed to bring it back online with the. Sixty-Sixth, bus, Sixty-Third.
So they have Sixty-Sixth and the school entrance, and then this is a city.
Is there access from this, to the school to Sixty-Third?
Yes.
Yes, that would be the bus.
Further south.
The bus entrance is on Sixty, on Seventy-Sixth.
Yep.
That's a right end.
Yep.
And then, they could catch Sixty-Third to do their left turn on the Seventy-Sixth. That's right, and there was not another, there was not another loop in between Sixty-Sixth and Sixty-Third.
No, there's always been additional one in there, that was that second one we were talking about.
Okay. This is exactly how the plat was, has gone through, this is exactly what.
This is what they presented to, the school has presented.
Yeah.
So, is this intended to be a future access to something?
I think there's a field approach there, it's a continual, it's a field approach into, that's councilman's, if I remember, if it's.
Yes.
Oh, it went the opposite direction, okay, this is County Seventeen.
Wait, which ways?
Oh, that's the substation.
That's the substation. That's the substation, I just, I'm sorry, yes, north is to the right.
Yeah, they changed the orientation of this, because this is County Seventeen right here.
Yeah.
And so this is a painted area, and this is the actual barrier.
Yes, that is the raised, the other.
That's the raised barrier, so there, there is the option for, or there's sidewalk that goes along here.
There are pedestrian provisions and sidewalks on the south side, the shared use path, oh, right here, here.
Sidewalks along here. Is this sidewalks here?
There'd be shoulders.
Yes, where's that shoulder? This is County Seventeen. There's a sidewalk right here on the, on the corner, but I. There's a sidewalk right here on the, on the corner, but I don't see any sidewalks that continue on County Seventeen.
I don't know where it would be, but. Nope, that is, you're right, that is just a shoulder.
Yeah, that's a shoulder and kind of right away.
Okay, so there's, none of these are sidewalks?
No.
Even though we've got.
The only place there's sidewalk could be on the south and east leg of it. Doesn't really show on there, this is the striking layout, so it's kind of.
So it, okay, it just doesn't show it.
Yeah, I don't think it shows it on there.
For Brian, just touch base on the sidewalks or paths. We currently have grant funding for a path going from basically up to our elementary all the way up to Great Serene First. The next segment that we'd be, and we have been applying for funding, federal funding for it. Uh we are in the middle of the PAC MetroCOC uh for funding on their last go around here. And just gonna make the cut, however, we've been more successful with RTP funding, Jim?
Yep.
We've been more successful with RTP funding, so the intentions would be to submit that for RTP funding. And hopefully we'd be able to get that, cause we feel we could stand a good chance with RTP funds. Because of continuation of a path already and connecting a system.
Right.
So having those segment, those crosswalks in place or or right away prevents us from having to go and retrofit the intersection.
How far does the merge line go up north on County Seventeen?
I was just gonna ask the same.
Yeah.
Is this?
Looks like it's a couple of yards. Doesn't show it on here, um basically, it takes this, the leg on the other side. Let me see here, look at my bearings. These are the county plan. Let's see, north is this way. So it goes.
Dimensions.
It goes, we start at.
Well, there's a scale right here, five hundred and sixty feet, and that's the same scale.
I guess what I'm que- I'm questioning is if it was far as Seventy Fifth, Seventy Third Avenue.
About three hundred and thirty feet, three hundred and forty feet. Oh no, this merge lane is way more than that, I was looking at something else.
Yes.
Two twelve, twenty six. Nine hundred, nine hundred some feet.
Okay, so it'll go through basically from the intersect, it'll it'll go up. Past the second lot, the second house, and almost to Seventy Third.
I would say yes.
Okay. At this point Seventy Third is probably gonna be our only access point to County Road Seventeen from. The east.
Okay, so you're saying that it's.
The cemetery road is Seventy Third Avenue.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, which, give me a marker there, so that's Seventy.
Seventy Third Avenue is, is the cemetery road, is actually a city street.
Half, it's a half of a true right away, they planted half of the one side, but another half will come when they do the other side.
Okay.
And what I'm saying is that's probably gonna be. Our only access to County Road Seventeen from that side.
You're just saying during the construction?
No, ever.
No, there's a frontage road.
No, not the frontage, you're talking further, further north though, along there.
You aren't gonna get another access.
I believe there is, there, there might, I think there is actually a second access north of Seventy Third. But there, there is another access point.
There's a farm approach.
Yeah. I don't know if it's a dedicated right away one or not, but there's access there, so.
Not in the market.
Brian, somebody said that the Facebook feed is down again?
Oh, really? How lovely.
Okay, I'm done talking.
Technical, technical issue. Jimmy, let me ask you a question, we talked about the roundabout pricing.
Mm-hmm.
It appears to have gone up significantly since our last conversation, so what changed?
Storm Sewer was one that was on, that the company wasn't real confident on their costs, so the Storm Sewer pricing costs went up. The other thing was additional lighting, so the roundabout will be lit, Seventy Sixth Avenue will be lit. As you're aware, Seventeen, Conroe Seventeen is lit by the north of Casey's, around the Casey's area into the town. So we had discussed and talked about lighting from the roundabout all the way through, not having a dark spot in there.
Right.
It was, it was fairly negligible, so that's included in this, this includes the Adelman, the Adelman Storm Sewer, this includes the Adelman, Adelman Street lighting. In this first one that you see here, so.
So that's.
Um so that's, but that's only three hundred and sixty.
The roundabout was initially quoted to us as one point eight million, which they covered one.
Right, so, so that's why I'm asking here why the increase, you know, that's a substantial increase.
Yep.
We're talking a million bucks here.
Yep.
So I'm trying to figure out here is what, what.
The, there was uh the frontage road adds cost.
Okay, that, I agree, that, but that was.
And then there was some, some modification had been made to the Storm Sewer. As far as further to the west to make provisions for getting a ditch down to Drain Twenty Seven. And some other. Why do I wanna call it?
But how's that, how's that part of the roundabout cost?
I thought s- the the frontage road would be part of Seventy Sixth, no?
Yeah.
Will, will forego the frontage road?
Either, either way, if it's broken in roundabout or Seventy Sixth, we're, we're trying to focus on one whole project.
Agreed, I'm just saying, you know.
Jim, how much did Adelman's caught, or, that one was over half a million.
Yeah, it's right at half a million.
So that's half of that right there, if you have Adelman's, which we're looking at doing that as an alternate.
It'll be bid as an alternate.
So if Adelman's, we're gonna meet with Adelman's addition again, and if they buy, if they say no, then we'll mix that part.
Right, I understand, I'm, all I wanna do is make sure we all get a head wrapped around here.
And that's why I included it.
Yep.
That's why I included it for discussion, I didn't want this to not.
Cause it's an increase.
Yep.
Russ.
See now, the question is if we don't do Sixty Sixth. And after you drop the level of Seventy Sixth. How are you gonna make it?
A hundred feet and taper back.
Okay.
Just come up, it's about a two percent, so relatively, I just checked it before we, before we went here.
Because of the Seventy Sixth Avenue's going down.
Mm-hmm, understand that.
And Sixty Sixth doesn't go down at the same time.
And something I do want, I do wanna add though is, uh that number does not include Sixty Sixth, the road reconstruction of that.
It includes a hundred feet back.
A hundred feet back, it's not the whole stretch.
Right, right.
So if we were to do that stretch, which Adelman's addition, the folks there have asked for that cost to be generated.
Yeah.
Um, the cost could go up even more on that, however, if we were to do the cost for Adelman's. That project, it's like a project within a project. So those costs would be.
Right, and.
Street lighting wasn't included in the original video.
Correct, no, I, I.
No, I mean, I'm talking about just the lighting around the roundabout and that, I just thought about that, that wasn't, I don't think they included that in the original video.
Well, and then we talked about expanding it too.
Yeah.
Initially, we were, however, you do the lighting, so.
These are estimated costs, they aren't what they are, I, I do see sticker shock for sure.
The initial estimated cost.
I know, and.
So.
I'll go back and look at the, at what they had, and try to come up with, see where we deferred more.
Okay.
So ten percent contingency.
Estimated add.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we can add another fifteen percent on the cost.
No, you, hopefully you can take off about ten percent.
But.
On even, even the contingency of ten percent.
It's, it's a, it's a high contingency.
Holy crap, it's a high contingency.
When you're at, when you're at a, a big project, yes, so we won't bond for that, I mean, that's bond for the actual cost.
Right.
Something I do wanna mention too is how the bonding is structured, I know Cory knows this, but. Uh we are structuring the bonding differently than what we've done in the past. Or do is uh, what do you call it, like a temp bond or short term bond?
Short term bond.
So we do the short term, get through the project, and then we do our permanent financing, our permanent bond. By doing that, we come back with what the actual cost is.
Right.
We don't have money based on an estimate and then have money just sitting there.
Right.
On that project, uh that's also one thing that we're changing with the city's approach, and that would be to address a special assessment policy too. Is by doing the short term bond, we're not leaving extra.
It's actual cost.
Yes.
So the three hundred and ten thou- thousand for land acquisition, we have to, is that?
Right away on the east side, right?
So is that right away?
Yep.
Yeah, just like, it's a bus turn.
Northeast corner, I imagine.
There's the northeast corner, and then there's on the south, and then there's some more on the south side, on the east side, since by, by extending the project, is orig- well, that's part, that's a lot, well.
And you raised the price of the land by putting the school in.
Don't you hate when that happens? No, yeah, well, that's the same, and then far east side too, we expanded that out, so we had to buy some extra there too.
There's a little bit more plus constructing the Storm Sewer ditch, so.
Yep, that's a.
You have a development, maybe we'll donate some land here tonight, today.
So are we, we still feel like building out to the east, you know? The maximum is the right thing to do?
Well, I don't, how much is that actually, I mean, that, maybe that's the other next step is to come back, what are the alternate options to try and reduce some cost?
Well, if you, if you do that, we throw our project schedule out the window, because if, this is scheduled to be in the paper on Monday. With a bid opening award in the first weekend in April, so basically, if we would do that, we lose a month.
You do not wanna pull back from Sixty Third, you'll regret it.
No, I, we went through this already.
Yeah. So, I know, it's just, I know, it's a bit of sticker shock.
There's a, there's a good chance we're gonna be dealing with the rest of Seventy Sixth within the next five to ten years anyways. Just being upfront, there's a good chance we'll be dealing with that, with the rest of the pavement of that.
I mean, we can do whatever, whatever the council wishes, I mean. The county does wanna get a bid on Monday, get it in the paper at least. Yeah, there is a fairly aggressive schedule on their side to get it open, they want the roundabout open, I think I put it in the uh, thing, it's the, was it the seventeenth of August?
Yeah.
They wanna have it before the school gets going, that's why when the bus is stopped, that's when they wanna get it rolling.
But it was seven, I believe it was mid-August, seventeenth of August.
So yeah, that's the, there's the project schedule.
So there's less interference with Conroe Seventeen, so they wanna have a very tight, and we, we're in agreement to that. Uh Jim and I were a tight schedule for the roundabout. Keep the flow on Seventeen or get that backed up and operational as soon as possible.
Yep.
And then Seventy Sixth, the sooner you get it done, the better, but the roundabout was the most crucial part.
Yeah, cause that's gonna be the most traffic interruption that we're gonna deal with this summer, so.
Yeah.
Mo, what do you guys think?
Maybe you, you aren't committing the funds, you're gonna.
I know.
Award it, or not award it, but we'll bid it, receive bids on it and evaluate those, and then you act on those, you don't act on these numbers. It's, and then, the problem is if you go through the month of bidding, and then you don't like the numbers that come in and you reject, it's probably another. Whatever changes need to be made, it's another couple of weeks.
I guess put in an alternate bid.
We could do that, we wouldn't be able to get it done in time, get it in the paper for next one day, if we had, if we wanted to do any form of alternate. I mean, we could sit down probably this week and come up with some form of uh cost savings, but I don't know, the county.
But if we.
Did most of the design on this, I don't know how they would handle redesign on it.
I'm just saying, if we think about it now versus a month, when the bids come back, you know.
Yep.
So.
I was gonna say, the other thing, Jim, too, is have we gotten a commitment from the county as to how much money they're gonna put on Seventy Sixth, we know.
Oh, Seventy Sixth?
They, they have not expressed any financial.
Yeah.
So, cost towards Seventy Sixth.
Yeah.
Um, the only financial contribution they have given, and. Brian and I were both at the commission meeting, and they committed to the one million dollars, no more, no less.
But that's specifically for the roundabout.
For the roundabout, which is, it, it, that doesn't matter, is the project.
I know, but still, it's, like, that, that's a base of a million dollars more than what we thought it was gonna be.
Now, this project, the scoping, this was, I mean, we did add some costs, but going past, you know, past Sixty Third farther. That was a, that was a change from the council that they wanted to do, uh we've scoped this project down, we've been vetting this one for. Oh god, about five months, so.
Least.
Five months at least.
Yep.
So I mean, this has been vetted through the council a lot, I know it's, the numbers are going, holy cow.
Yeah, and I've expressed, you know, all I feel about that, so.
Yep. I mean, there's, there's a couple of way, a couple ways. You shave down a little bit here or there, but then then, how much of a difference is it going to make? For example, if you went with that, if you went with asphalt instead of concrete. You might be able to shave a little bit on there, off, but then you may be dealing with having to re-cave the road. Ten years or less, because of the traffic, you're gonna have bus traffic on there, they're going, they're gonna eat it up. So I mean, there's ways we could cut some corners.
We also have green starts on it.
Yeah.
What's that, Russ?
We also have green, green.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
So. Hundred and five thousand pounds.
Like I said, there's ways you can cut corners, but I wouldn't recommend it.
I definitely don't wanna cut corners.
Cut down costs or do that, we can. I mean, we cut down the roundabout, cut out the. The extra, the half lanes and all that, but I know that was a big appeal to council doing that from very beginning, so.
Well, let's see, we're gonna have to get it out on bid, and let's see what we're dealing with, you know. It's the only way we're gonna know, we got the real numbers here.
I mean, every, every step, you're kinda getting in deeper and deeper, hard to go back, but.
So the only, the only thing would be, our recommendations right now is to say, look, can we split out, does it make sense to split out the Adelman?
Addition. Well, that would be split out as an alternate.
Yeah, that's the way we're.
It's already split out.
That's the way we're. You're looking at a total dollar amount, but it could be split out, and it would be in.
I think that's what we. So that, that's essentially it's split out, like it's, it's eight on one total, but yeah, split up two point eight, so we'll get bids, individual bids for each of these pieces.
No, you'll get one bid for the roundabout and Seventy Sixth, and another one as an alternate for adding Adelman's in.
That, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay, including.
Yeah.
So Seventeen and Seventy Sixth will be one, because the county's gonna do the construction engineering on it. So, and then they did the design on it, that was their contribution, was to do the design, so.
Yep.
Okay. Motion to approve the, on suspects.
Okay, Brian makes a motion.
Second.
What else, should we swing out?
Chelsea does the second.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries.
I mean, we all agree we wanna spend the money wisely.
Well, we're not approving any spending, so we, until we get the numbers back.
To go back and have to redo the road is not spending money wisely.
We know we need to do the road, so it's. We gotta keep it moving ahead.
Alright, so then, uh we need to.
Lucas has got the next one.
Start to advertise the bids, huh, do you wanna get those out Monday is what you're planning?
Yeah, we're gonna get them into the paper here tomorrow, and then we start the process, as you can see on the schedule according to my memo. Would advertise in the paper on the eleventh, we'd open bits on the uh. End of the month. End of the month, and then we would, if, if need be, we would be able to, to award a contract the first meeting in April. If we feel like we need more time, we can always do it the second meeting in April, so only award three days later. We'll have all the extensions and stuff for you, we do all the legwork, so, I know, just.
When was the close date again, Jim, on that?
Uh, March twenty eighth is opening.
March twenty eighth?
So do you have a plan, do you wanna lift there the bill?
Snowmobile, ETB.
They're opening the dates.
Swamp bug eighth.
Snow skis.
So there, there is discussions about a phased entry, and there's a lot of bonus being put on the contractor to provide. A plan to the city for the reviews and to the county, to the one administering it.
They're opening.
And it's gotta be submitted in an adequate timeframe to, before it gets implemented. And we didn't get too specific on this project with it, just because there's some stuff in play north of you, as far as like you say, seventy.
Seventy Third.
Some, some, something like that.
Yeah.
And there's some stuff, some discussions up north, too, so it's a, it's a heavily.
You've got all the Adelman's, you gotta.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
It is very heavily back on contractor, it was written that way on purpose, and there is a pre-bid meeting here, it's scheduled for next Tuesday, but I'm gonna have to change. To kinda hit some of those high points, so they know that, so.
So you're just gonna advertise one week in the paper?
No, it goes through, it goes through minimum publications, is I believe two for a special assessment process, so. And then we, it's posted on our website, is where the construction documents are downloaded from. So then the contractor subscribes to a service that they get notified. So, and the contractor subscribes to a service that they get notified when there's certain projects that come through.
So I thought it just said one.
No, that's the first, first publication, I should say.
Okay.
Alright.
Any other? We're gonna do an action item on this one.
On what?
Whether we're, you know, to advertise for bids.
Oh, do we need a?
Yeah.
So entertain a motion for someone.
We'll pose a motion to, direct the engineer, right?
Motion approving the resolution directing the engineer to advertise for bids.
Okay, that's where I was heading, so thank you.
I figured you were.
Thank you for stating that.
They get a second on that.
Second.
Hey, Chelsea does a second, all the favors say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, alright. Gutters done, Jim, let's see what we get.
Now moving on to a, now moving on to a more, a little more pleasant topic, the water meters, all meters have been installed, except for the trailers.
And then we're, except for trailers.
Yeah, so it's a caveat.
Well, we knew that, but.
Yeah, that wasn't part of the project.
As long as the rest of it.
And the uh, city went around on last Monday and collected data readings, got them all the work. So everything is, I believe that those are the readings you're using this month for your water bill, are you not?
Yep, they are.
That's awesome.
So, I was provided with the final quantities this morning by the contractor, and I will go through, verify those, prepare all the final documentation, closeout stuff, and we'll be.
So now we're actually getting, actual water usage readings, is there a process where where we're going to start collecting, the water being sent to the lagoons slash wastewater? We, I need the number, we need the number, that tells us how much water loss we have in the system.
Yeah.
And, and so if we can get that number of how much water is actually being sent to the lagoons, so we can get the input versus output, and we can calculate the actual usage.
We're, there was a discuss this morning with our public work staff, or this afternoon about, uh, seeing the water output from water treatment.
Right.
From our plant, and then how much we're actually building for, so we can see our water loss and.
So we're getting the water that's produced.
And then.
Get the water.
Our work staff is supposed to be keeping track of the lagoon flows also.
Because that's actually, there's two loss portions, right, because if it's lost between production and the actual usage, and lost usage and the lagoons, so we need to measure both of those.
So.
So let's see.
We anticipate to have better data, within, as the months go on, we should be able to build upon the data.
But we will be able to measure, because we're already getting the production numbers.
Yes.
We just need to get the output to the luges, and then output down.
And, and I'm adding a separate, like I said, is we'll be able to see a better idea of our production versus our usage. So we could see if there's any loss in our system there, and then we could see it on the backend going to lagoons, so.
That, I would just encourage to get that process in place as soon as possible, so that we can get a true measure of loss, because right now we made some assumptions, in the model for rates, and that will affect the rates, if, if we have to decide that, okay, our usage or loss is, above an acceptable amount, then we have to adjust from there. So.
Yep.
It will be interesting.
Anything else, Jim, on that one?
Nope. Okay. Nothing else, I got a bug.
That was great, great rejoice, so that, that project will actually be, so Excel, is that project closed down?
It's, it's, it's closed in the standpoint of they've submitted their final quantities, now I have to review and rectify them with ours, and then there's some final documentation to go through.
We will have one more payment.
Probably two, because the last one includes a balancing change order, and that's to balance the contract with the actual constructed quantities. So the next one you'll get will be the semifinal, basically that just reduces the retainage, and then the following one will be the final final, so, yeah.
Two more. Jim, you excluded the trailer courts, when will that happen?
They, it wasn't ever part of that project, the trailers, that was something, a separate, completely separate animal.
We hope to tackle it this spring or this summer.
Maybe it can never happen. I know, something's gotta happen, something's gotta happen.
We'll, we'll let you negotiate that off.
Hey, that's what, interesting project for you to tie along.
Special project.
I'm gone next year.
Yeah, I'll leave it back to you on that. Alright, moving on then, Brent, you got some special assessment policy on.
Yeah, this is the next fun one, um.
Do you have someone who needs to present?
No, I don't, this was just a discussion, so we'll come back with something more substantial later on. Um, I have, I have been talking with some of the council members to get feel of this in court, um, but, as we've gone through the special assessment process, like the S S L, um, and all these other projects that are going through special assessments related to the school, uh, site, uh, also how popular special assessments are as a topic throughout the whole area. Um, Fargo has their special assessment committee or task force, West Fargo has been doing a lot of, community meetings, they went through about six or seven community meetings to get input from residents on special assessment. Uh, one common thing that I've been hearing from residents, as we've just been talking to them about the S S L, is, the concept of just getting a letter out. Uh, that is above and beyond what century code requires, but we've also discussed that, you know, the council, identifying a policy of what process we would actually follow for special assessments, what means of communication we would follow, would be helpful to be able to show residents, this is what we're committing to. Um, by having this policy, that would be helpful from that angle, the feedback, like I said, is letters, are, it's the most common thing I'm hearing from folks.
Also, but there are also an element of the letters, plus posting on, you know.
Yeah.
Social, yeah, so, social slash.
And that.
Senior approved communication.
That could be expanded upon within that policy too.
Right.
So, but that's just the common feedback I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Uh, also, uh, the concern that I'm hearing too, is, uh, folks being concerned that, you know, for future projects now, not looking back at the past, looking at the future of, another example of the S S L happening. Uh, that's why we're trying to clean up the utility rates, utilities can operate funding these projects in the future. Uh, but within that policy, the council could commit to saying that those types of projects would be funded through those utilities, and any costs that have to be, that impact residents could be, reflected into the rate, the utility rate for those users. Uh, most entities, that's what they do, is they reflect, their capital improvements through their utility for that.
So they could be, I mean, the element of this, depending on the type of project that is, that the funding sources can be coming from multiple locations.
Yeah.
Versus just everything being special assessed.
Yes.
So, that, that's where the policy, because, I mean, that's, in looking at the special assessment policy that Fargo has, they structure it in such a way that by project type, they are clear, or at least they publish the formula that they use, as a guideline, it's not set in stone that that's what they'll use, but that is a, the starting point for their negotiations for how they plan to fund it, and they can adjust the percentages from there.
And that would be up to council how you'd want this structured.
Right.
Um, but the concept would be that, and this is just food for thought right now, but, for water and sewer projects, for example, like I said, the utilities would be structured to be able to handle capital improvements. So, with that measure taken, you could take the stance of saying, uh, we would not do special assessment for these types of projects unless there are variables that kick in.
Right.
These variables that kick in are for like a new development, new developments, that's a very common tool within, the region, using special assessments, they'll pay for infrastructure and pass it on to the area.
The special, the special assessments are typically assigned to the new development, because that's part of the cost of providing that service to that development, is getting that.
And, those are petitioned by the developer.
Right.
So it's developed, it's petitioned by the landowner, by the developer, so that would be okay.
Right.
If a neighborhood wanted to have sewer, for example, or water, they didn't have it before, um, they could petition for those improvements. If they have enough standards or, then great, then we could, we could take it on. Or if there is a federal or state agency pushing us to where we had no choice. Um, those are different criterias, it basically would eliminate to where the city wouldn't just be able to go do an improvement, to do, to uh, have it as special assessment.
Right.
So, that is something to consider, not saying do all, it is a different, a little bit different of approach than what you see, some of the other entities doing. But, it's possible for us to do.
But I mean, it, it's reasonable for us to say, at least in the near term, to at least start a policy document, that number one says, here's our communication policy, for any new development or any construction project, here's the communication policy. And then, we could then further break that down by project type, to say, here is, here's a model, that we could start with to say how we would project a fund, so for example, certain type of a miller overlay, or some street project, how would, how much of the highway funds would we dip into to fund that?
Yeah.
Right, so that we would at least start with a, so that we don't have to assess everything, that there's a portion of that that would come from this X Y Z fund, whatever that is.
Yep.
Right, but right now, we don't have that, and you're proposing that we do need to do that.
So if you would like to see, I, I would recommend that we proceed with developing a special assessment policy, and start crafting it, I think it's going to take a few.
Oh, it's gonna take.
It's going to take a few council meetings to hash this out.
Yep.
However, um, I think it does provide assurances to the public of, this is what we're going to do in the future, we are going to change how we operate, um, it shows that we're listening, to what we're hearing for feedback, and then also, um, it gives us something we can budget for in the future, so we know that these aren't going to come out of left field on us.
Right, so, in a, in an easy win, in terms of priority, let's at least get the communication part of that policy.
Yeah.
That may be the first section of it, because this will be used as a communication model for all projects. So, you know, even if we started with that, as the beginning of the policy, and build out the details behind that, that would be a great place to start.
How do you get on your special assessment committee?
You have to get nominated.
It's a nomination.
By who?
Me.
Well, then I'm not gonna get on it. I mean, that wall appears, or I mean, no, for shame, so, you know, so I just, I probably wouldn't get on either.
Got to do is ask.
I want to be on it.
They've asked, right now, I don't know who's all, if anybody's, we gotta go through the, you know.
Yeah, and it's, I think.
We have, we have people on there right now.
Coming up, um, I think we're gonna find out if those members that are currently on it still want to be on it, or they do. Um, so there might be vacancies, I don't know yet.
And I do recommend to have more than just three, as these big.
No, it's just, the. Century code only allows us to have three, in their six-year terms, um.
And so I don't know where the terms are at either, I think we looked it up.
We looked it up, it was six-year terms.
No, not where they're actually at, it's right now, one of them is only in his second year.
Yeah, we had one that was in the second year, and two that were.
Who started in two thousand fifteen?
Cause you and I were.
Yeah.
But they could resign at any one time.
They could, and, yeah.
Probably starting to think of.
So then, it's appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council.
Alright, so we'll, we'll dig into that one.
Yes, agreed, let's move along.
Okay, yeah, so we'll get started on that then, Brian, we'll have some more communication. The other thing too is, we could probably have some uh, conversations with Bernie, um, from West Fargo, and probably even some of the, assessment stuff that they're coming up with for.
And I did talk with uh, John Chockley about this last week, and he did say that, uh, West Fargo was looking at doing something in nature.
Yep.
It's something that we might be able to work together, or.
We'll just have some conversations.
At least see where we can find common ground.
Exactly, that's.
We don't have to do everything the same as like they do.
But if they got some ideas, they would blend in with this, perfect.
And that's what we've been wanting, or been intending to do, is piggyback off of what, what these other entities, Fargo, West Fargo, where are they finding out?
Yep.
See what we're, if it's consistent with the feedback we're hearing, and then get something together for our.
I mean, that's the thing, you look at some of the other entities, their, their policy is rather complex, I don't want to create something that's so difficult to manage, but yet, we can, we can start, at least get something in place.
But being there, going through the process right now, of revamping some of that, maybe there's something that we can get from that that saves us some time too, so.
So if there's, uh, if there's some collaboration meetings or something, I, because I, like, I don't know, Chelsea, if you want to be included in, any of those meetings, it'd be good if, I'd like to learn more about what they're doing.
Okay, yeah, they just had some public input meetings here, I think that concluded in Jan.
Yeah, I think those are in January and February, but I think they're done with those now.
Think they're done with those now, now it's to kind of put it together, come up with.
But it would just be good, I don't know who's.
I had a survey on my desk, I don't know if John put a survey on my desk, but it shows survey results of, uh, how those went.
Yeah.
Community meetings, I.
Okay, so they've got that part put together now, okay, cool, was that.
I haven't gone through it yet, but.
Okay, that might be something.
Surprisingly, people still wanted the special assessments, wanted cities to pay for it through specials.
The biggest thing was that they were felt more informed after learning how the process worked, it seemed like it was a far more spooky formula, as to how it came up, for the ones that were provided the information obviously, but uh, there's a very high percentage that people still want to keep up.
Now, I sat in one of the meetings with West Fargo's bunch, and that's kind of what the consensus was too, it's just, again, the more information you know about that, and.
Yeah.
There is a whole, yeah, there's a whole process to how specials work.
So we'll start drafting something though.
Do that.
And.
It's great.
And we'll also offer peers and see what they're thinking too.
Alright, we'll move on to the next item here.
The ne- the next one is regards to, uh, new developments and city ownership of ponds. Um, this has been starting to become a trend, uh, where the city has taken ownership, either, uh, unwillingly or willfully. I'm going back to developments a couple of years ago versus ones that are hap- that just happened not too long ago. Um, a model that Fargo and West Fargo are using is that city, the city is basically purchasing, re- or ponds that serve as a regional capacity. Um, they purchase these detentive ponds, the land for them, they do the excavation, as part of the development, so it's concurrent with the development happening. Uh, special assessments would be used to pay for them, and then it would be assessed towards those folks that live in that benefit area. Uh, the appeal for the city from that angle is we have ownership of the detention ponds, we'd be able to control the levels, we can control the whole system, throughout, that's the, that's an appeal there. Also, working with the developers, it is kind of an incentive to the developers, it can be viewed as, you know, hey, hey, here's something we're working with you to make this happen. Um, really wanting to get feel the council for this, as we have developments coming up, as you all know, um, but, this is something that's going to be proposed very soon to council, and what is your thoughts about city purchasing the land, their special assessment, having it happen? The only difference is that the excavation, the pond, all that would happen anyways. It's just that city would own the lot and everything, versus the developer, and also it would lower the layer of credit, required on the developer, because there would be less land that they're developing, so if they have, if they have, uh, two hundred acres or hundred acres, and they want to put a ten acre, ten acre pond in there, the city buys that ten acre pond, they only have ninety acres to develop. So then they sit, they have their land allocations, all that based on that, but it does give more control over the pond.
But the question is, is who, who ends up maintaining those ponds going forward?
The city would.
City would.
Well, just like all, just like the other ponds that we own.
Does it become a recreational thing, or is it truly just becoming a city-owned, I mean, is it a, an asset or is it a liability, that's my question.
But you can use it for regional storm sewer.
Yeah, I think making, um, regional ponds is ideal, you know, fewer ponds, so.
Yeah, and Don, Don could expand on that, I kind of left it out, so.
Really kind of set up as to how, um, the plating process goes, so the shoreline is maintained by the individual. So the shoreline is maintained by the individual homeowner. They actually own, own land down into the water, and there's a balance or storage even for when the pond rises that they are able to essentially flood it back there. So there's no, nothing built there, but uh as far as the maintenance goes, it would be an additional pipe or anything else. But what this does is really kind of is a, is a joint venture really to the developer and the city to have larger uh regional ponds. There's a bunch of individual pond to ponds that become kind of that nuisance, because who is really taking care of it? And then in doing so with that, you create all the interconnectivity. And then as a developer or amenity, then part of it, rather than having it landlocked with all residential or privately owned. That's where the partnership comes in to say, okay, well, let's have this quadrant open to green space or park space or anything else. More than amenity versus just a utility, a utility to it, and really enhances and unifies the neighborhood.
I mean, I, I see some of them, especially like Deer Creek, where the kids, neighbors have turned it into a, you know, a hockey rink in the winter time, right? I mean, granted, they can't use it now because there's too dog on the snow, but yet they can use it in the summertime, and I don't know if they're even, is it even an option? But you know, I, I like the idea of having it being an amenity that is shared, you know, that multiple people can use, not like you said, landlocked behind the set of homes. And nobody gets access to it. That's, that's not cool.
So when we did Shadow Creek, it was a combination kind of a master plan to have them all interconnected that you could literally get from one to the next. But also kind of keep them centrally located within it versus having it on outskirts or just making it a linear ditch. Uh, so having some curved linear really has more appeal to the neighborhood. Uh, traffic calling, because you can't drive a curved road as fast as a straight road. Uh, but more importantly, um, you know, you, you guys are, as the administrators regulating the flows in and flows out. And you know, so what is different, the really kind of the philosophy and partnership that is different about a pond. Is that it is just that amenity versus of, well, say, well, um, they have to dedicate the streets, we don't buy street right away. But so if you do ten percent street right away, ten percent park uh right away, and then now ten percent of pond right away. Uh, all of a sudden, if you're thirty percent before, you can put a shovel in the ground. Yeah, it's, it, it's kind of steep, so it's a matter of uh shifting, pushing the water off onto somebody else and distracting the second houses that get the yield. Or do we say, okay, we're gonna try to use the breadth analogy, we have a hundred acre, we're only gonna develop ninety of it, but in that ten percent. In addition to parks or additional ten percent to ponds. So it's really kind of investment back into it, and when it goes back into it as an example. Um, is, is the knee jerk reaction or the fear about the value of the specials, lots enough to keep piling specials on? Typically, the way it ends up working with the balance of ratio of pond acquisition to a lot is about twelve hundred to seventeen hundred dollars. In the course of twenty five years, ask any of those people that have been in, in these round tables, would they rather have a, a neighborhood that has higher specials with higher amenities? Or they'd rather just have a, you know, when you take a look at the nice developments, those are always, always the little pill at first. So I think you have to kind of spend some money to get the money back, and creating a higher tax base, higher neighborhood, all that stuff that goes along with it. So the twelve hundred dollars, or even using a higher number of seventeen hundred dollars over that twenty five years is, you know, a couple Starbucks a month, so.
Well, the, the question is, is this really a change to our, because it, does it, does it apply to our stormwater management? Is it, because I mean, using regional as a way to look at it and say, if we're, and the primary purpose is for stormwater management, if that's the primary purpose. And it trying to mitigate the, if we can collect one regional water feature, having four smaller ones. Does that reduce costs because of the economies of scale? So, but that, that's my question then is, is that really a policy that we would put into place? That is related to our stormwater management, not necessarily, or is it a ordinance change? To, you know, the planning and zoning to say, for this type of development, you must plan for, you know, like you pointed out, some percentage for these dedicated purposes. I, I, I guess I'm trying to understand where, from a policy perspective, we would actually apply that this is the direction we want to go.
What we are, what we are requiring right now in planning and zoning is a drain plan. Which, uh Jimmy's gone, but I, I think it's, it covers a hundred year rain. Kind of thing, and the ability to hold that and then. You know, pump it. One of the things we, you know, found in, down there in the southwest is you just don't get to pump willy nilly into the uh.
Big ditch.
The big ditches around, well, not the ditch, into the drains.
Right, yeah.
Because there are, there are processes you have to go through with the government to do that.
So clearly they want, you have to retain it for so long, they have those sediments, each pond is kind of a little setup. Not much different than your balloon system, it's all like kind of go through there, but being able to retain it and retain it for a certain number of times during those hundred year and then a five hundred year rain event as well. And so getting that density, and I, why I think it best be part of handle on one on one, case by case basis. Is because as someone's not committing to three hundred acres versus someone committing to thirty acres, if you apply that percentage. That thirty acre may be already covered by a part of that other stuff. But then when Lucas would set up that benefiting area, that land would already be, you lay it on out, a pond on that land. But they're getting a hundred percent utilization of the, so that, even though that parcel maybe not have a pond out there, they're getting the benefit of having this pond over here, so.
If their drainage ends up in one of those creative ponds.
They're pouring out a share of what benefit they get from it.
But is that, again, is that a policy that we put into place for the stormwater management? Or does that, you know, is that a pond and zoning thing? I, I, I guess that's my question, I guess. Where, where do we go from, you know, saying that, because we recognize that there's going to be some maintenance that we're gonna have to do to these. Because if, at some point, their sediment's gonna build up, and there's gonna have to be some dredging or something, similarly, when make will grow, right? There had to be some maintenance work done to that.
There's been a lot since the days of Blue Mountain Lakes and stuff, uh, but all the stuff in West Fargo, we have a, a slope and, and now making it wider and shallower. We don't get the sloppy water sediment, so um, you know, we, we can be interested to see to get some data even from West Fargo. How many years that, if I even go back to stuff in Eagle Run or wherever else, we've not had to do that yet. So I think in terms of long-term capital improvements to it, or just deferred maintenance, I really don't. Like I said, we've made mistakes in the past, and such as the rip rap or anything else, and that ended up being more on maintenance. Well, now we have a, or the hole, they can choose to rip rap, but if they decide to, it won't be required, but that, that slope is gradual enough that we don't need rip rap for any wave action. Even designing the wave, the shape of the pond and distance, so not creating any wave action, to have any erosion on that. So like I said, it, it looks like just a squiggly line on paper and you, you know, color pencil a blue, but it's actually a little bit more of a, you know, place into it. So, so it'll be more on your, that, I think what your question, you're really asking for is a more on the storm management side. Is who, in the past between now the West Fargo, Fargo or Morehead, who we've dealt with with this pond situation, and more on that management side, not the P and Z side.
And as we're applying this, I recommend it, right now, we do a case by case basis. Uh, and then, and as we develop, as we've handled them a few more times.
But that's no different than the way we've handled it so far in each.
Well, how we've handled it so far.
Why, why would we do anything different?
Yeah, if you want to do a policy, you could do.
Cause you haven't paid for it before.
You haven't paid for it before. The differences have been, like Dream Fields, for example, the city's hand was forced on that, they had to buy, buy a lot. And then put the pond in there, and that was a forced situation. Then you had Lost River that put the pond in, and then said, city will take over the ownership of it. So in reality, the city is, at the end of the day, is still owning it, is still costing the same amount of money to the residents that are in that development. Uh, the only diff- the biggest difference on this is that it's basically giving the pond straight up, even with the school.
We're doing it on the front end.
This, yeah, we're doing it on the front end, so the back end, even the school, they will retain ownership of the lot until they're done excavating the pond. Because they want the dirt, even though they could have just gave us the pond right off the bat, and we were given dirt. So it, it, like Corey said, it's all upfront, that's the difference of this.
But I mean, if, if we're making this decision on a case by case basis, I don't see that as being any different today than it has been in the past, so. I guess that, I'm, I'm missing the point, are you looking for our input on whether we support or don't support ownership of ponds?
Look, looking for your guys' opinions towards, we say the ownership of the ponds, and.
In this manner.
In this manner.
Mischmanner, right.
Because this is a different approach, it's handled a little differently. The end result is still the same, it's just approached differently. So we're trying to get your guys' feeling for, how do you feel about this approach?
Another variable with this particular one is the size of it, it's gonna be, there's multiple, and it's, it takes up a lot of acres, so you're taking out a lot from that development.
The larger, the larger, you know, like you pointed out, the regional pond gives a, a feature of which that we can get more of an amenity to feel to it. Versus just a stormwater, right? It's, I, I, I think, I think of the one right on Forty Thavon, right next to the high school. Right, that tiny little thing, I think it's just, it's water, they put some fake swans out there, and it's pretty to look at, but you know, it's stupid. Right, they use the water lawns.
The difference, do we do one like that, or do we make it an amenity and, and I'm asking you to buy the land and have me pay for it back through specials? Because the, right now with this, all the land is gonna be benefiting it by large is, because the schools already supply for their own, so they're not gonna get benefit from the additional stuff that we do. But so all that in turn would come back to the special assessment, the assessment that I have to be responsible for until the development is sold out. So it's really a way that we can have something look like Shadow Creek or something else.
See, what, what I favor going forward is, let's say, the section of land that I live on. I wouldn't want to see three ponds in there necessarily, I'd rather see one.
Regional one, right?
One, one regional one, and, and because what we're looking at along for development, development now. Is almost the size of sections, you know, again on the west side, and we're looking at open sections. And I think the plan we should go forth for planning to have. You know, more regional ponds, rather than every little neighborhood that goes in with its forty houses.
Has their own little puddle.
Has their own, has their own little puddle.
Well, that, that creates more maintenance work than one larger one.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so I.
So as an area gets developed, then you have to look at the entirety of that section or that undeveloped area as a whole.
And the drainage, stormwater management for each of those areas is gonna be different. So therefore, it's gonna be coming up with a plan for how we manage it, 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 the variables will be different based on the chunk of land. But.
If we're to kind of collaborate with the council and say, you know, like, we have a vision for this particular piece of land to be in the, you know. Um, splash pad or green space or new city hall or whatever else, and as that collaboration goes together, of course, duplication costs money. So it's a matter of how do, how does it frankly get funded? And how, who takes all that and on the chin, so it's a matter of, rather than the city having to pay out of their um fees that is collected, right? Whether it be utility fees or not, this is a way that we don't have to raise utility fees or anything else to help pay for it, the city gets what they want. And then it's spread out over all the benefiting area of in that section, but yet the entire city gets the use and benefit of the name, so.
I mean, that's no different than the splash pad that's in the Oz good area, right?
Shadow Creek.
That's Shadow Creek? I mean, that's, that's awesome, so it would be awesome to have something like that down here, right? So, that, that place is absolutely packed every single summer day, it's incredible.
And all the pond and everything else, and if you drive through their four streets, it measures the ponds that we have. I put lots on, there's almost as much that don't have lots, so you can view from the throw fair, curved linear, parks surrounded, trails, there's activity trail. I mean, that is, that roundabout is truly the, the center and the heart of that whole development and the branch is all, all coming there, so.
Yeah, it gives it a better presence, so long-term, the community as a whole is um, you know, better longevity, better quality of life, all that. And better property values for people that aren't even in that area.
Well, I think with this particular piece of land that we're contemplating, it's like, you know, it's very close to where you want to have your city center. And as the stuff starts to get farther out, it's getting farther, far, far away from, you know, downtown Horace, if you will, or old part of Horace. So I think it's, it's ought to be thought about, you know, just wisely supposed to be playing, we get one chance to do it right.
Yeah, we've been saying, you guys get one chance at this.
We want to make sure it's done right, yeah, absolutely.
So that's why we gotta be somewhere thought put into that, but what we're gonna do there.
Definitely the idea of having this.
The city twenty seven acres adjoining and, and found insulation of the drain. So uh, in, in collaboration with the Southeast Water Resource, given the reason that we got a pond, we actually put the ponds under the whole land. As opposed to moving it from the higher ground to put it into the lower ground, so we'll enhance that. Um, and it's really kind of working with the natural elements that are there and creating the geography um to go there, but it's, it's no small task. And you know, uh, all of a sudden, then, um, you know, it'd be north of four and fifty acres of, of development would be there that will be right out your front or back door.
But that, there again, that can be the centerpiece, so to speak, of, of a community gathering area, a place for people to be able to, you know, that's a unique feature that we don't have today.
Well, just, I guess by comparison, to take a look at a, a Shadow Creek area with that that's in there. Um, that previously had the most expensive house in Cass County.
Right, yeah.
This is changing, yeah.
Um, compared to like in Eaglewood, where it's very linear, and there's this no amenities, there's this a mile of straight streets around. Um, that also meets its water retention, kitchen requirements, but it's very much more um quantitative and utilitarian versus, you know, with doing some stuff with it. So it's a matter of what we can do with the requirements that we have to.
Agreed.
But I guess I'm looking, what, what much of this is that, while we've done this, like I said, in the other one, we've not had to do this in Horace before because of either larger developments that don't require it. Um, or of such size that we, we did take one over from somebody else, we were just kind of handed what was already done. So to do this as a true master plan and on a large scale, we're talking three quarters of a section. Um, we need to, oh, we can't have you guys as a partner to be able to, to make it happen. Because if we didn't, and just, I'm not saying it as a, but the alternative is, we have to make it, make sense economics as well, so then we're of course to get more lots and whatever else with it, so.
And I think the Horace community, you know, has expressed themselves in this campaign, you know, process. They want to see, they don't want to see a lot of little houses just lined up in a row, and we're getting a lot of that already. So I think people are gonna start getting a little nervous in the, in the next couple of years when they see these new elements.
We were having that very conversation in planning and zoning, that we don't want to see a bunch of little houses lined up in a row either. Uh, we don't want the East River to be all little houses and West River all big fancy houses. We're not gonna have that kind of a mix, and we can stop.
Yeah, that's setting ourselves up for a disaster in twenty years.
Well, yeah.
Well, I just caution you guys, I mean, we can't say little houses are big houses, or what we're talking about, workforce housing or high-end homes or else. I mean, for the fifth straight year in a row, the average house size has gotten smaller across the United States than lot size. So we have to couple horribly with uh improvements in specials and building, because we don't want to create something so beautiful that yet, but yet nobody can ever afford it. So also, if we look at the median income of what Cass County is, even though Horace has the highest, uh, right? And you guys, you guys have heard that over and over, and it's gonna be for death, but yet you have the very one end of the spectrum with so modular homes, and you have the other end. I would challenge you to say what Horace is missing is the middle, there's very little middle. Uh, our success with Prairie View and what else, and people come up with, um, and that's why they're wanting to get up, but they're wanting to have more amenities out here. That's, you know, it's not that they don't like, dislike the lot size or location or anything else for the price of it. It's like, well, you know, we need, we need grocery store, we need, you know, so, and that's, now the school, that's all coming. So I guess we can do density with it not looking like density.
Right.
Exactly, if it's created.
Yeah.
And we don't have to throw it all in here, all at once. If we need to take the time to get the variety, then we should take the time to get the variety, you know?
What, one common thing is, you know, Matt is working quite a bit with us and the planning commission to revisit our zoning code. To really make it easier, make us an easier community to work with, but still get what we're looking for. Um, the, we, we, concerns are regarding the row housing, there are a whole bunch of houses all the same, same setback, everything. Yeah, the garages right there in front, that's element that if you design, you work with the developer and design it properly, you could help limit that quite a bit. Um, Matt has a good point where he was, him and I were talking the other day where if you could have it to where if you're saying mid block, and you can see the end of the block each way, that helps alleviate some of those concerns. Um, that's what we're working on, and work with the developers of, hey, can we stagger these a little bit? Or, you know, when people are building, encouraging that a little bit. Um, also encouraging the different type, or different, or variety of houses, or, uh, different size of lot here or there. Even, and that's what we've seen in some of these developments too.
Size, well, also, the, the house size variation, but if you stack them all with uniform lot sizes, you can never have a bigger house than a small lot.
Exactly.
So, but we've really learned again from the past is trying to, we go on, we mix those sizes up, there's probably still just as many of those little lots, but they're sprinkled out through the.
Yeah, that's great.
With the balance of the, the medium and a few.
But, but that's all in how we write our, or update our zoning code, and we actually follow through with our zoning code. So we hold the developers accountable on following that and expect them to work with us just as we're working with them.
But you have given us some flexibility there.
If we know the maybe, or the, you know, the houses that are selling are, say, two hundred thousand, what kind of variety in that price range can we get? Rather than having just this one style for that one price, we can do connected buildings with more detail, or, you know, mixing it up.
Well, I think really, and as, I've had the pleasure of working with Mac, he comes even from a different vantage point when he's coming here, but even just the, the curb linear of the road. Because when you can't see them all in a straight line, they don't look like they're all in a straight line, the setbacks may be the same, but, and that's why we really embrace the, uh, undulation of the drain. So we really don't have any street, straight streets in there except for what was on sixty six, or sixty.
Sixty third, sixty third, yeah, that's the only street.
And so then, that ended up being straight, we're gonna change at this point, but south of the quarter, quarter, or yeah, quarter, quarter line, the left section, half section line, that's gonna curve over the other way. So we, what we could control, we did, but, um, I would just encourage you guys, if you've probably driven through there, that the drive through fourth street or Shadow Creek, and Shadow wouldn't see how that runs. We had the exact same thing, there's a high school and a middle school right there that we worked, collaborated with on Seventh Street, that probably developed this site while they developed this stuff. And, uh, there's a lot of things that are kinda about the same kind of pinnacle right here, that it's just a matter of which fork in the road we, we kinda take. And we certainly like to have, uh, have it be out here.
My sister-in-law lives on Little Bird Lane, and that loop, I mean, when you go through there on Halloween, it's like the perfect trick-or-treating loop, it's just loaded up with kids, they absolutely love it. And it's just a small, it, great character.
I have a friend who lives there, and what they have is a neighborhood within the development, they have a, they have a separate neighborhood.
Yeah, it's very cool.
Yeah, it really is, that's the kind of thing.
That's.
And that just came out of just that, just trying to, you know, listen to what the market, so when you first put that in, and then, you know, branch out another one. Some of the lot sizes changed as we got closer to the river, closer to the amenity, but yet there's still, you know, as you drive through there, you don't necessarily notice what's sure of the small lots. But Little Bird Lane is some of the smallest, the most highest density of that first, uh, first phase that's been in there. But, you know, with the apartments right there, you get more, you get more pushback when the apartments that got put there than, you know, the density of the, of, of the homes. Because when they're done nicely, and we drafted some pretty strict, uh, covenants as far as landscaping and over trees and everything else. And so everyone wants the charm of an old town street, and the street can't, uh, tree can't be, but if you don't ever plant them, they're never gonna get there. So, you can't make it look like that day one, but the twenty years down the road, that's what really then is, is a foliage is really can't take, you know, that's what softens so much of the landscape for the buildings. So I really, I mean, it's the next home for the next meeting, but to really keep up our, 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 um, tree policy in Horace is really, you know, something that you can take. Like, if you as a developer, I would like to see it, because we can only go so far, but then once we can't hand it over to you, you, the, the city, we really like this kinda sort of maintaining and force to do that. And even, I talked about fourth street, you know, if you, it's something that we could go in there whenever, so, if you still happen to do that. We even talked that we even, as part of our permit, rather than having, um, much like West Far, but we actually have a tree fee as part of the permit, give those into a kitty. And then so if people don't plant it, then they have that money, the city has the money to do it.
And we actually do have a lot of that structure in place already, so we have the tree ordinance, we have a fourth street fee, so we do have.
But, uh, on this permit, cause right now, we pay more, uh, we pay more on the road bond than we do for.
Oh, you were saying.
We actually have a tree fee, uh, when we take out the permit.
Interesting.
And that's right.
Well, I think we straight a little bit off topic, but.
Well, so really what we're looking for is council's reception to it, and I think we kinda got a feel for it, but aren't you?
I, I mean, yeah, I, I would like the idea of that, having regional, you know, stormwater, you know, amenity oriented, you know, features that we, residents can take advantage of, so, yeah.
Okay.
Quality.
Yep, yep, I mean, it gives the sense of more quality, like you said, in that Shadow area, it's, everyone wants to live there, right? They wanna be in that little neighborhood, so that's, that's what we want to, anyway, so.
Well, and it may seem a little out of sequence, but before we take our master concept to planning a zoning, which has ponds that would presumably be bought by the city. And then we get all the, the city, and like, oh yeah, we don't wanna buy grounds, well, then that completely changes our, so we're really, you know, planning a bunch of work, so. That's why I wanted to ask Frank to, in front of you guys, is to see at least take your, have a sure.
Let's just say, especially in that area, the larger the better, especially in dream twenty seven, because how can we truly create that unique feature? Right, that, that no one else in the area, because like you said, we're taking advantage of a landscape that's already low, how can we embrace that? And use it in such a way where it can benefit everyone, right?
There's a lot of contractors we're here to work with, so I'm having a little bit, we really got a, we really got a snag on the.
Yep, correct, exactly, so.
I think we're all thinking the same thing.
I think we got a good feel for where the council sits on this, so.
Okay.
Um, as for software updates, events, Black Mountain.
Yeah, we're still on board for going live April one.
Okay.
We have webinars coming up in the next couple of weeks, we're talking to them almost on a daily basis, and things look good. So, we're comfortable, so.
So right now, you, you're still using GP for generating the financial reports, I wonder, you have?
Yes.
But starting April one, you'll start generating the financial report and closing the books in Black Mountain?
That's correct.
So, one question I have is how long will that data, I know there was a question you answered, maybe a month or so ago, uh, about the, uh, availability? Are we gonna have to continue to pay for the GP instance to be available to us to get access to data? Or are we gonna be able to essentially print out some reports and shut it down for now? Cause we've got, we've got to have a plan so that we could say, cause I don't wanna pay, ideally, I don't wanna have to pay for that GP instance to, to hang around and collect dust. Cause we aren't gonna be in it on a database basis, but yet we need to be able to pull up historical reports for comparison.
Yeah, I guess my thought is we would probably run a dual system for two months.
Okay.
To make sure.
Right, right, right.
And after that, you, you'll, like, the month of June, we would probably sever our ties with.
So I guess that was the question, in terms of what we need to keep for historical policy, for historical financial reporting? If, if we need to keep that through the end of the year, or if we, if it truly is just a couple of months, or what?
I think, Brian, we, I don't know, it's new territory.
Right.
Um, I, I, I think we'll keep it for.
I think we probably need it for the end of the year, at least.
Absolutely, cause we're running three months on GP, so.
Right.
So I, yes, I think perhaps by the end of the year.
But, so I, I would guess that, can we make that part of the plan, is to say, at the end of the year, when we print out our last financial statements, blah, blah, blah? That we can literally take it offline and maybe request a backup of the database?
Okay, sure.
So that it can be accessible to us should we need it, but yet we don't have to pay for the service that we aren't using.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
So, just, that would be my request, is like, request a backup of the database, so that we can have that and keep it for historical access should we need it.
I understand.
So, perfect, thank you, that's good news.
So, one, one thing I was gonna add is, uh, I believe we have a one-year service agreement with True IP, is it?
Yeah.
For GP, so we'd have.
But we're only charged for what we use.
Yeah.
Right.
But, um, and we, we could fit, we'd hash this out as we get through the transition to Black Mountain and all that. Um, and get a feel for with the auditors, their opinions on, should we keep that access, full access until, with GP until?
Wondering, do they have like a maintenance mode or something like that?
Well, and that's what we could, that's what we could discuss with them, because we, we may wanna have that access to full GP.
I mean, if they could, if they could really just take that instance and shut it down and then only restart it when we need it, that, that, that would be an option as well.
Yeah, and I think so, Brian, I don't know.
So, that, but that's a question, that's a question to find out.
Yep.
So that we could minimize our cost, we have to pay them for, but yet still have access to it.
I understand.
So, perfect.
Okay, um, for Smart Gov, Matt is working with them closely. Um, we're looking at having the building permit aspect of Smart Gov be the first tool of implementation. Uh, target April, May timeline, he's ahead of the developers on everything they're asking for, so, uh, that's a good sign, we're making great progress. And I think that's going to be a tool that helps builders tremendously when working with Horace. And it's complex on our side, but it'll, it should be, and there's gonna take some training and some handholding at first with even with, with the applicant side. But, to have that ability for a builder to be able to manage all their building permits and permits with, say, a horse online, all right there, is gonna be a great amenity to have.
Are we gonna have to get, is there a link to that that we can put on our website? So that it can be accessible for, cause I'm assuming that's a site to log in, and everything for the developers to log in and be able to manage, or residents as well, right? Cause residents will be able to submit their own permits for a fence or a garage, or whatever they're gonna do.
There will be a, it'll be connected through the city's website.
So, there again, we need to get a communication pulled together so that we can let residents know that we, that this thing is now available. And here's the process for submitting a new permit for.
When it's available, we're likely gonna do more of a soft opening of it with the builder's side. So when we get those miscellaneous permits to come in, they will hopefully have the kinks worked out. If there are any kinks that haven't been worked out, they'd be worked out with a thing in building permit.
Cause right now, the way it is, we've got some of them, well, some of them are coming in a paper, some of them are coming in through the website, so it's inconsistent, right, so.
Well, if they come, if they come through the website, they're referred to contacting staff, and, uh, right now, they come in, they talk to Perry, they fill out the form, and then they're taken care of, so.
Anyway, just communication is the only element that I'm, I wanna make sure that we get that out as early as possible, so that as we go into the construction season in May, starting May, really.
Once we have something fully operational for them to see.
Okay, but the, make that available so that it is ready by May.
That's the goal.
Okay.
So, we all know sometimes you have hiccups with software and stuff, but, um, it is progressing, we haven't had any delays really with our side of things. The developer is working well on it, and they're moving forward.
Uh, is there any discussion at, about this, uh, road bond? A thousand dollar, uh, fee additional deposit, road deposit, I think it's called?
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, when, before it was ground, everything else, it seemed to make sense that, you know, the shoulders could get wherever else. But by and large, for now, all urban sections that are getting in, it just seems like it's creepy. I'm just curious, have you guys ever actually been at, that catch anybody and retain any of that deposit or assist, it's a matter of money and money out?
We have.
We have had some.
Yes, most definitely. In the process, there is Perry and one of the, well, Jim, most of the time, they'll inspect the property and come back with new calculations on how much should be reimbursed and. Oh, it's happened several times, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of, oh, I mean, is it still just, uh, I was always telling you, if, if there's been stuff that's happened to our, our development in front of a lot that nobody's even built on or whatever else. And so, there's, it's hard to kind of catch them in the act, I guess, of causing that damage. And so, me as a lot owner, I guess, you know, how did it happen, wherever else, and so here it is, it's done, it's just hard to know if something was it. If I happen to be building on that lot and it's still happened by someone else, it seems very hard to kind of mitigate that, is to catch it in the act, so to speak. It's how, we see this damage out here, but we get it, and how did it happen, and why am I paying for it?
We have not addressed the bond fee.
No.
Um, it's something we may look at after we get this, some of the other changes incorporated. And we're reviewing all different facets, fees and everything in the city, and tackling the fees one by one, so.
Well, and I, I, I'm going to, to say that the other side of it is, I have the Perry and, and Jim aware of some things that we've seen when, uh, Goose Next and Madali down, or whatever else. Um, and so, it would be good that if we could, I'm, I'm actually encouraged to hear that some of that has to be retained, because there have been some times where we, we have, I'm almost caught that perpetrator, but. Just as long as it, I guess if it's being enforced and having actually some, some keeping, it is good, rather than just a, a money and money out type thing.
Okay.
All right, I just have one more, I didn't, I apologize, didn't have this on here, but they came up today. Um, I don't know if council, if you guys got this from League of Cities, but Prairie Dog Bill is up for, um, review by the Senate Taxation Committee, I believe it is, tomorrow. If you do wanna submit a layer of support, please send it to Blake, or you can send it to me, and I'll try and forward it to, but you would have to write the letter tonight. There is a ton of support for the Prairie Dog Bill, so don't feel like you have to do a letter, but if you do get the wind, uh, wanna write a layer of support, it's very simple. Like I said, I don't know if you got that email, I forwarded on to Blake, he asked for it to be very short, basically just saying you're so and so, and you support Prairie Dog Bill to be voted as a.
Will that go to our legislators versus?
You could.
They'll disperse it, I assume.
He will disperse it, it would be as a testimony, so it'd be a written testimony to that committee. You could also, it's not the time yet to send to your legislators.
Well, but, so this still is in committee, though, it isn't out on the floor for.
It's been through the House Committee, now, and it's been through the House. Now it's going through the Senate Committee, and then it'll go through the Senate for votes.
Okay.
I'll try and get something written up tonight.
So, that's what I was gonna say, is.